I am going to call this meeting to order at 4:31. So this is the meeting where we're going to do your board reorganization. So I'd like to entertain nominations for board chair.
Andy?
My second.
All those in favor of electing Andy Pond as your board chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Andy. Turn it over to you.
And so we go to the vice chair. At that point, do I hear any nominations for vice chair?
Nominate Kevin again.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clerk? Do you would like to? Who is the clerk? Does it?
Mort.
Mort? Mort, would you be willing to take on another?
Sure.
So nomination for? I'll nominate Mort.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board representatives for the SU.
Currently, it's Kevin, Mort, and Pam.
Okay.
I'm okay with staying on.
We can make a motion to keep the three that we have on right now as the SU. Okay. Alright. I'll make that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Policy committee?
Can I just ask you again, who is the three? Kevin, who?
Mort and Pam.
Thank you.
Policy committee? And the board.
So I asked me to.
I nominate Andy. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee?
So in lieu of the finance committee, you guys have been doing those two motions. One that allows us to send payroll checks out before any board signatures and then other payments go with any two board signatures.
Right.
So if you want to come back to that, I'll come up with a real wording for that.
Okay. And executive council representatives must be one of the three SU board reps that you would want to take that on again?
Sure. I nominate Kevin.
You nominate Kevin? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll go back to the finance committee part?
Okay. And so the first motion is a motion to authorize payment of non-payroll expenses after warrants are signed by any two board members.
I'll make that motion as Morgan ran.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second is a motion to authorize payment of payroll expenses in advance of warrants being signed by two board members.
I'll make that motion as Morgan ran. Do you email that?
Yes, please. Thank you. I was watching. It's probably the same motion.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so it goes on to the normal agenda.
We've got to do negotiations.
Oh, yeah. And start. So what we have now for the teacher negotiations, which is over for this year, is remind me.
Amazon, which I will make any.
It was Pam.
Yeah.
And I think it was both the beef for support staff as well.
Okay.
So right now, we're one meeting into support staff negotiations and we have two more scheduled.
Okay.
And then next fall, we'll begin on teacher and support staff negotiations again because these are both one year.
We can keep it the same?
Unless, I can't be on. Keep it the same. One unless one of these guys won. I'll keep it the same.
So you could do teacher.
I could do teacher, yeah.
Yep.
Let's say keep it the same.
Okay.
I'll make the motion for Andy and Pam. Negotiations.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And sick leave bank is currently Pam. Because of a change in the master agreement, which we'll talk about later, there's only about three more months of work, so-called work.
Okay.
I'll nominate Pam.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That was the one you said?
Sick leave bank committee.
Alright. So the agenda, review visitors. So the right to win. Need to approve our. Do what? Previous minutes. And comments. Corrections. I'll make a motion for a brief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, so I'm going to let that take personnel. It's under her, under her agenda. I'm going to have nothing under student or nothing additional to add under personnel. So I'm going to jump into the master agreement conversation. So we've just finished, we have a tentative agreement with the teachers' union. So we've been working for a couple of months to try to figure out, to figure out a deal. So primary goals of this negotiation round were to really look at language in terms of bringing Sheldon into our FNESU. So in this next year, as of right now, Sheldon will be a part of Franklin Northeast. So we knew this was the time that we needed to really look at comparing the language and benefits between those two systems. So we really looked at working hard to come to a place that made sense for both. We also looked at the work that we've done in the SU to identify why we're losing teachers. We have, you as a board, have been a part of that conversation for about a year and a half, where we've really tried to unpack why, why it's difficult to retain and attract new teachers to Franklin Northeast. Some of the data that we unpacked when we were looking at that was that teachers are generally leaving in years one through four. If we can get them to stay past year four, the trend is that they tend to stay for a long time. So that was one of the things we wanted to focus on in this negotiation round. So I'm going to go through some of the big changes in the master agreement. There are lots of little changes that I won't necessarily go through, but Morgan has sent that all off to you to read before you've taken a look at it. But I'll just review the big ideas in this. And then in the end, I'm going to ask you to make a motion authorizing Andy to ratify the master agreement by signing away from the table. So if you have any questions as I'm going through, you can stop me. So some of the big changes that we added included a section under teacher rights around transfers and reassignments. That was something that was really important for our new partners in Sheldon, that they really wanted language in there to identify how we would make decisions around transferring teachers within these new districts that are being formed or reassigning within districts. So we have some new language in that section. We cleared up some language around provisional emergency licenses that is going to be kind of a clear identification of what needs to happen for those teachers that are in that situation where they have a provisional emergency. And that actually came from a recommendation from one of the teachers. It was a great recommendation. Cleared up some language on work day. Under work year, we were able to negotiate one additional day for our teachers, so that'll be one more professional learning day for next year that Beth will be able to plan with her teachers. We cleared up, like I said, language around the work day and preparation time for teachers. We also, Morgan's going to go over the major parts of the salary that we negotiated, so that you understand the big concept around that. One of the things that we cleaned up was how we initially placed new hires in our supervisory union. So what has been happening, has been our past practice, is when we hire someone, they go on the salary schedule for however many years' experience they have will represent the step that they're on. It's not all that equitable with the teachers who are currently within our supervisory union because their steps no longer really match their years of experience because you have frozen steps in some years, you've taken them off the salary schedule and replaced them in other years. So this language provides clarity around how we place them and it gives us a range of where to place people. It's a lot more equitable to how you're treating your existing staff members, which we thought was really important. We did a lot of just date changes and making sure that we were picking a date that made the most sense between those two master agreements. And that part, there were a lot of those little changes that don't impact change all that much. One of the things that we did pay attention to is the retirement benefit. So currently, you have a benefit in the master agreement for teachers once they've been within our schools for 15 consecutive years. If they leave, they get a retirement benefit of $125 per year of service. So we negotiated in language that's called a longevity bonus. So anybody that is this year, in year five or beyond, will keep that existing retirement language that we have had in there. Anybody who's in year one through four this year will be eligible for the longevity bonus, and so will all of our new hires. So as the years move on and the teachers who are in years five and beyond, that retirement benefit will kind of fade away over time and the longevity bonus will, will grow as we hire new people. So what that bonus does is every five years of service, they're given $600 as a recognition and appreciation for staying within the supervisory union rather than waiting to pay that out after they've been here for 15 years. So it's another way that we could offer something unique to attract new hires. We negotiated around health insurance and we ended up staying with the AD/20 for the gold CDHP. We kept the same level for your HSA benefit and we did put a little more money towards the, in lieu of insurance. So that piece, we thought was pretty strategic and we wanted to make that feeling of someone had another way to get their insurance. We wanted them to be able to do that. There is language in here around teachers that are eligible for, to take coursework. All teachers can get up to three credits at the UBM Winter Race, which is right around $2,000, just shy of $2,000. So we put a provision in there for teachers in their first five years of service. So if you have $2,000 and you take a course that costs $1,000, you have about $1,000 left in your, what you have access to. At the end of the year, you can apply to get half of whatever is left applied towards your student loan debt. So this was another strategic way that we thought we could attract some new teachers. So in the first five years, they have some ability to get some added pay down on that student loan debt. I mean, that was a Richford High School teacher's idea. I thought that was, was a great idea and the board really appreciated that idea too. So the sick leave bank, Morgan alluded to, that it was changed in this round of negotiations. So the sick leave bank is going to fade away at the end of this year. And instead, we have language about sick day transfers. So what's been happening is we are still coming to you with requests for people to donate days to people who don't qualify for the sick leave bank. So rather than running both at the same time, we are eliminating the sick leave bank and just going with the sick, sick day transfer language in there. And there are some provisions for dealing with people who have already kind of invested in the sick leave bank. That's all they've figured out. We did some work to attend to seniority as we're moving into these new districts and we're bringing in a partner from another supervisory union. We're attending to that your seniority is your seniority for continuous employment within the supervisory union instead of district. So if people are shifted between an FNESU position or a Richford position or within the new Enesberg-Richford Unified Union School District, it'll all count the same. There's no keeping track of seniority based on who the employer is. And that also applies to Sheldon as they transfer in. We didn't want them to feel any negative result of that transfer, so they will carry in their actual seniority from Franklin Northwest into Franklin Northeast. Can I ask a clarifying question about that? Would that, like, say an Enesberg teach, not Enesberg, that's a bad example. Say Montgomery. Say a Montgomery teacher came to work in Richford or a Richford teacher went to work in Montgomery. Would they take their seniority with them in that case too? Yes. Okay. I understood when you said Richford, Enesberg because, and then you said SU, but you didn't, I wasn't sure about another town. Yes. Within the SU. Because what we used to do in the past would, you know, when, when I shifted from Montgomery to Berkshire, I made a request to the board to carry. Right. Actually, that might have been a sick day. I'm not really sure. But the seniority piece, for now, we don't have to ask for that anymore. Just going to calculate it that way. It's on its continuous employment within the SU. So Morgan, I'd like you to talk through the salary piece of the negotiation.
Sure. So we were also looking at trying to combine the grids, grid in Sheldon and in Franklin Northwest is similar to yours in that they're both now dollar grids rather than the percent. So as people move down their salary schedule, as they work here for more years, they're getting a specific dollar amount rather than a percent on the base. And that allows you to come up with different ways to raise that base, which is the amount that you're paying for a brand-new first-year teacher. The agreement that we came up with the teachers was that we would give them each a step and the step value is worth $1,350. Folks who are off-step, we would give that same dollar amount. These are people who have been here for quite a long time and aren't captured on that grid anymore. So we're giving everyone a step. We added a few steps at the bottom of the grid to try to catch some of those people who are off-step. But for hiring new teachers, what we're doing is we're dropping the top to the two earliest steps in the grid. So we're cutting those two off. If you were currently a step-one teacher, and there's probably a few of them here at the elementary school, we would give you a step, you'd move to step-two. But since we're cutting off one and two, those folks would get an additional step this year. So those brand-new teachers are going to see a $2,700 raise instead of a $1,350 raise. But what that does for your budgets is that you are getting your returning teachers for about a 3% increase overall, which is right in the ballpark that you settle in every year. Tends to be two and a half to three and a half. But the increase in the base, which is what you're using to attract new teachers, is actually going up 7%. So you're in a much better position competitively to hire the folks that we know that we're attracting up here right now. And Lynn pointed out in the meeting over last night that this is the first time since she's been in this SU that we're not the lowest paid in the county. So hopefully, that's going to mean a better pool as you go out to fellow openings in the open.
So you can see from the theme of what I just shared with you, we held true to what the goals were. And I will say, for the teachers' union, they really understood and believe in the same goals that the board negotiation council had as well. So I think that's why it was a successful bargaining between the two parties because we tried to do it in a place that we knew that was what we wanted to work towards, but we also knew we needed to be responsible about what our taxpayers could afford at the same time. So we had that range that we wanted to get at. And, you know, Morgan was pretty masterful at recognizing that by removing those steps, it didn't have a compounding effect on the rest of your salaries on that grid. So that part made a big difference when we got into that process. Any questions? So if there are no questions, it would be great if someone could make a motion authorizing Andy Pond to ratify the master agreement away from the table.
I'll make a motion to authorize Andy to ratify the master agreement away from the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
And then I am going to give you an Act 46 update. I brought visuals tonight because there's a lot to talk about. Do you want me to bring my sticky notes for next time? My little loading dots?
We're good.
So I'm going to go through this and I'm going to go slowly. I want you to stop me if you don't understand anything because I think that with all the moving parts and what's happening right now, it's important that you understand all of this. So the top visual is just my attempt at the representation of the Enesberg-Richford Unified Union School District. You guys fall into the category of districts who are forced to merge under the State Board of Ed order. So it's taking Enesberg and Richford and it's creating one UUSD board. Right now, the operational date for the Enesberg-Richford UUSD is July 1, 2019, unless something happens in legislature to change that. So I'm going to go through.
Court, court.
Court, court. Well, we're going to start with court, okay? So you guys are members in the group lawsuit associated with Act 46 that's really centered around challenging the constitutionality of Act 46. So one of the asks of the plaintiffs in that suit was that Judge Mello consider granting an injunction for members of the joint lawsuit in order to force, in order to stop all activity surrounding forced mergers. He, he gave a summary. He did not grant the injunction. In his summary, he indicated there were some points that he made that, if you read through carefully, it's a little less likely than what I think the plaintiffs were hoping for, that he is likely to rule in favor of plaintiffs. So he still does have to hear the merits of this case and then he has to make a ruling. He has indicated that that ruling is coming prior to June 30th, 2019. So there was no injunction. The court proceeding does not stop merger for ERUUSD at this time. It's likely that no matter where that ruling lands, whether it's in favor of the plaintiffs or in favor of the defendants in this case, that it's likely to end up in the Vermont Supreme Court. So these proceedings could go on for a long time. It won't completely be decided by the end of June. So there's nothing really that is likely to happen in the courts that's going to change your operational date. However, there's some legislative action that I want to talk through with you. And this is a little confusing for the Enesberg-Richford UUSD because there are big differences between the House and Senate. So earlier in this legislative session, the House introduced a bill, H-39. And in the, in this version of the bill, the operational date for Enesberg and Richford to merge into the ERUUSD would be July 1, 2019. So that passed out of the House and it went over to the Senate Ed Committee. In the Senate Ed Committee, Senator Baruth made an amendment. People are naming the amendment the Baruth Amendment. It's really the Senate Education Amendment. At this point, that amendment has passed through the Senate Ed Committee and the Appropriations Committee. And it passed through a second reading in the Senate today. Tomorrow, it's going to be heard in the Senate for a third reading. In the Senate Ed Amendment, it would give the elected Enesberg-Richford UUSD board the authority to make the decision about the operational deadline for merger. It would decide between July 1, 2019 and July 1, 2020. So you understand the distinction there, that right now, you have transitional board members. So you have Andy, not Andy, you have Kevin and you have Pam. And in Enesberg, they have Rick and Polly. So you, I'm going to go through what our schedule is, but you're going to eventually have an election for members of both communities to vote on elected board members to the Enesberg-Richford UUSD. If the Baruth Amendment becomes law, the elected board members of the Enesberg-Richford UUSD would be those that have the authority to decide the operational date of 2019 for 2020 for the ERUUSD. So if tomorrow, the Senate amendment passes through the full Senate during the third read, it's heading back to the House. So if the House reads the amendment that has come out of the Senate and they agree with it, the Senate will sign off, I mean, the House will sign off and it'll head to the governor's office for his approval. If the House disagrees with how the Senate amended H-39, it's going to head to conference committee. So what that means is the bill is going to land in a small group of senators and representatives are going to have to try to come to terms. They're going to have to negotiate somewhere in between the House version of H-39 and the Senate amendment of H-39. And they're going to have to try to see if they can come to some consensus. If they can come to compromise and they can all agree, they sign off on it and it goes to the governor to become law. If the conference committee cannot come to an agreement between the two sides, that bill and the amendment would die in committee. It wouldn't land on the governor's desk. So these parts are moving pretty quickly now. What I reported last night at the Northern Mountain Valley UUSD meeting is a little different than what I reported tonight because of action that happened in Senate today. So we're trying to follow that information pretty carefully. So the last part of that legislative process is around the governor's approval. So if, if the House approves the Senate amendment, it'll go to the governor. If there's consensus at the conference committee, it'll go to the governor. If not, if it doesn't come out of conference committee, it dies there. So there are some things that I've tried to really unpack in the Baruth Amendment. Morgan and I both have, have looked at this pretty thoroughly. So I'm going to give this to you and I don't want you to get lost in it because I'm going to, I'm going to tell you the parts that I want you to, I think you should pay attention to. So when you get it, if you could just flip it over and look at page 758. So I'm trying to unpack this amendment as it relates to Franklin Northeast. So in order to unpack it, we have to build some common understanding of language. So at the top of page 758, I have some handwritten notes for you. So when you're looking through, it's important to understand these terms. When it's, when it refers to existing district in this amendment, it's talking about a union school district created by a vote of the electorate. For Franklin Northeast, that means the Northern Mountain Valley UUSD. When you see the term forming district, it's the school district ordered by the State Board of Ed to merge with other forming districts. So that's referring to the Enesberg Town School District and the Richford Town School District for you all. When you see the term initial members, initial members of the board of the newly-formed district. So this applies to Enesberg and Richford only. So that's referring to the elected members of the board. When you see the term merging district, that's a school district ordered by the State Board of Ed to merge into an existing district. So that applies to the Montgomery Town School District and to Sheldon. And when you see newly-formed district, that's a union school district formed by the State Board order by merging forming districts. So that's the Enesberg-Richford UUSD. It sounds kind of crazy that we have to attend to those details, but you cannot understand this if you don't understand that language. So when we went through this carefully, there, there was some clarification that we needed. So we reached out to, because I do feel like it's my responsibility to make sure I understand it in a way that I can communicate to all of you what the potential is if this passes because whatever we're going to end up with, we have to be prepared to either go this way or go this way depending on where this plants. And we need to understand it in advance to be prepared to do that. So I've reached out to the AOE, to the VSA, to the VSB. I reached out to Senator Baruth and I've reached out to legal counsel to get some clarification about what this means for us. So some of the information on here applies more towards NMV. And there actually is a whole other section of questions that I eliminated. You didn't need to get stuck in that place, but I wanted you to see it in case people are saying, you know, "Why is she contacting the legislator?" I want you to understand why because there's stuff that doesn't make sense for us in here. So when it's talking about merger deadline extension, I've highlighted. So when it's talking about merger deadline extension, I've highlighted that section and we already have talked about it. For you all, as a forming district into a newly formed district, it's your initial board who's gonna make the decision to delay. As you can see by the number of questions that I have outlined under the mergers of merging districts, that's related to Montgomery and Sheldon joining the NMV, there is quite a substantial list of this right here. There's quite a substantial list of questions. I'm on page 2 of the visual one, right at the top under II, under merger deadline. So all of those questions need to be answered in order for us to understand what those next steps would be. So there are a couple of things when we really unpack this that we think the legislators need to attend to, and that's what I've reached out to legislators about, is that there's a small school grant language in there. So it would essentially provide Montgomery protection of their small schools grant. Right now, Montgomery... There's a competitive metrics that was created this year. So because Montgomery didn't merge on their own, they lost the automatic small schools grant. However, they met the criteria that was established for small schools grants, so they're going to receive it for this next year, but they're gonna have to reapply competitively every year. If Montgomery merges in July 1, 2019, their small schools grant will be shifted into a merger support grant and they'll keep that in perpetuity or until the legislature changes the law. What they haven't attended to is Bakersfield has lost their small schools grant and they did not create a provision in this law to provide them a path for retaining that small schools grant. So it really is sending a dangerous message to a community who follow the law involuntarily merge, that there's a penalty for favorably doing that. So we're... I'm hearing that people are hearing us and that they're gonna try to create some sort of a carve-out for that path for Bakersfield because it doesn't make sense otherwise. The other piece that we tuned into, we've talked about this already about the union school district budget. So we're in that kind of a place that feels a little uncomfortable. It's almost April and we haven't worn a budget yet. So there's a provision in the Baruth Amendment that provides a path for if you do not have an approved budget by June 30, 2019, the agency will approve a budget for you that would be, in this case, it would take Ennisburg's last approved budget, Richford's last approved budget. It would add the two together and then they would take the average increase in education spending statewide from this past year and they would give you that percentage increase on top of your combined budgets from last year to move forward into 1920. So that's the provision for how it would work if the Baruth Amendment passes. They don't have language in there that says anything about existing districts. So I've asked for them to clarify that so that there's a clear path for the NMVUSD to have a path to approve budget. They don't get one by their voters.
So just to clarify, you're saying, or this is saying, that we wouldn't have to warn a budget. We could just go without amount of money if we so wish?
It's saying if you don't get one... They're not recommending you do that, but if you don't get an approved budget, then yes.
By July 1?
By July 1.
Okay. I guess what I'm seeking for information is if it isn't... If we don't have an approved budget by July 1, then do we have to keep working or is that our budget for next year?
That's your budget for next year, is what I understand it. As you know, because we've talked about this a lot as leaders, this target keeps shifting on us. We're zooming in and this is what we understand now, but then as the process goes, it keeps changing and melding. So something totally different could come out of Conference Committee in the next week or however long it's gonna be.
I think we also need to see what part of statute they're changing with that 100% plus 3% figure. Because my understanding of the 87% is that it's not that that's your approved budget since that is the number the state's gonna use to send you the state aid, but the expectation is that you're still gonna come up with a final number from your voters at some point. And so it depends on if they're tweaking that part of statute or if it's something that's completely separate.
That's unclear to us.
Sounds clear to me, too.
So I wanted to try to capture what's up for the ERUUSD side. So I tried to give you a timeline. That's the next thing. So you know that we have warned an organizational meeting for April 11. I had originally told you April 9, I needed to ship that date. So it has been properly warned for April 11 at 6:30 in the Ennisburg Falls High School Auditorium. It is pretty important that people show up at that meeting because that's where you're gonna have conversations about how your new district is going to operate. It is something that... There was a motion the last time we tried to have an organizational meeting and I just wanna be transparent about that piece. So there was a motion to recess that meeting until the lawsuit had been determined. So that wasn't actually a legal motion because you cannot vote to recess a meeting without having a date certain to reconvene. So I did reach out to the person who made that motion to explain this is why we have to come back together and have another organizational meeting because we can't just recess and not have a time to come back. So she understands that. We've talked this through. Secretary French had warned the next meeting for April 11. So that's what we have gone with. So here's the tentative schedule and I'm staying tentative. I want you to keep that in your mind as we understand the parts now. So we would have, after the organizational meeting, we would warn a meeting of that, the transitional board. We would that night have the ERUUSD Transitional Board warn an election for board members. The petitions for those board seats would be due on April 15. Then the Transitional Board would begin working on developing that unified budget to present to the ERUUSD elected board members. And we've already been doing this parallel work. So we've been running the Richford budget, we've been running the Ennisburg budget and now we just need to have the Transitional Board look at the two budgets together. So we can be... We've been prepared to do it either way. So you would actually have an election to get elected board seats to the ERUUSD on May 21st. Then, there are some ifs contingencies here. The jobs of the elected board members of the Ennisburg-Richford UUSD would be if the Baruth Amendment passes, if what's currently in Senate passes, that ERUUSD elected board would have to decide the operational date of 2019 or 2020. So if they decided on 2019, they would... That elected board would approve a budget. They'd warn a budget vote on May 22 because we're gonna have that budget ready for that board to look at. And then we would have a budget vote likely on June 27. Again, tentative. That's what we have plotted out. Those would be all of the proper warning periods. If the newly elected ERUUSD Board were to decide upon July 1, 2020, the Richford Town School District would then approve a single district budget, warn a single district budget vote, and then hold a budget vote and a date to be determined. So those are kind of your paths forward. So if it's 2019, that's what we're gonna do. If it's 2020, that's what we're going to do.
It's only the elected board that can warn the budget vote, correct?
Under...
The Transition Board can't warn a budget.
Right, okay. No matter what, the Transition Board can't warn the budget.
Yep.
It's the elected board.
Yeah, okay.
What other questions you have? I know it's complex. I wanted to get it in writing for you to be able to see it in front of you.
And the board petition timeline is really quick and the driver for that is given the April 11 organizing meeting, the earliest we think we can do a budget vote is June 25. If we had another week, we could build in a buffer in that window.
There's a 6th Monday provision. Do you wanna talk about that?
So for Australian ballot votes for seats, like you guys do in Richford, you not only have to meet the 30-day warning period for the election, but petitions are due on the 6th Monday before Election Day. So yeah, so it's basically a 42-day period to get your petitions.
And then they embed it in a law book that's... All right. So we're gonna keep working to keep you updated as we go through this process. I'll send out information as things change. And if something comes out of the legislature before our next meeting or before April 11 and we feel like it's urgent and needs your attention and action, we would call a meeting to discuss that. But until that time, there is your update. And if you have any questions in between, just let me know. So Andy, I just wanted to say that there's a VSBA training on May 15 at Lake Murray. If you're interested in going, it's a superintendent board chair training. Just let Doreen know and she can get you registered. So that's just that one day.
May 15?
May 15. And then the Thursday, Friday, there's a training that I stay for. I do just wanna say there was something I wanted to do under organizational. We did this last year and I'd like you to do it again. These are the code of ethics for Vermont school board members. I would like you to read the code of ethics. Take two of these, read them, sign one for me and then keep one.
Good. Almost did it again.
Sorry. Thank you all. That's all I have for you.
Morgan?
Your monthly financial report was sent in your package. The only action item that I have from tonight is regarding the high school window replacement project. I sent out by email the bids that came back. Of the four contractors we invited, two returned bids. Kingdom Construction, who did the windows project in Ennisburg and also did the building expansion in Montgomery several years ago, had a base bid of $439,400. Spates Construction, who we've also used regularly in the SU, most recently for the Berkshire expansion, came back with a base bid of $376,400. We also invited EF Wall and DC Glass to bid. My understanding is they did come to the Walkers, but didn't submit a bid?
No, they didn't.
They didn't?
No, the Walkers were only Spates and Kingdom.
Kingdom, I've heard, has a lot of work lined up this summer and this would be a big project for them. So I think they likely bid a little higher figuring if they got it, it would be worth it, but they didn't need it to fill their dance card. We... My recollection is that it's a little bit higher than the numbers that we were kicking around earlier in the year. The window costs themselves, we were talking in the low 200s. And then Black River suspected the work to put them in would be around 100 or 120. So I asked them why they thought it was up and they said they think it's largely because of construction costs, but it's hard to know when these contractors are bidding, how much they're seeing from down the pipeline. They made a lot of things that are locked in or feel like they're likely they can afford to raise their bids a little bit. There were three deduct alternates that would reduce that by about $10,000 if we took them. That's not a huge amount of money in the grand scheme of things. So assuming you wanna give Andy and I direction to move forward, I would probably defer to the architects on whether the amount that they're willing to take off the contract for those alternates is worth it or not. They need about seven weeks lead time and they think it's gonna be about a little under two and a half months to do the work.
That's a tight window then?
I mean, it's starting the day we get it done.
No, it was in the month, actually.
He's pretty got a technique in there.
It wasn't bad.
In Montgomery, I think Kingdom came in under bid.
Kingdom came in underestimated, yes.
I mean, the amount Montgomery paid was less than what they bid on the project. So how does that work? They can't go over the amount that was bid, but they can come in under?
Yeah.
And they did significantly. I thought it was a significant...
They bid significantly under. I don't remember that they came in below.
They did. The amount we paid was less than what they did.
Is there a contract drawn up that will be done by a certain period of time? If it goes over, we get...
We can charge them liquidated damages. Yeah, we will need to negotiate anything that wasn't in the bid specs.
Okay.
But yeah, we've got a standard contract that we use for the windows in Ennisburg and we've tended to use it for any non-major contract. Like in the Berkshire project, that was a 200-page contract.
Okay.
This one is eight pages.
I will say, from my perspective, in Berkshire, Spates was good to work with. They were... They did what they said they were gonna do and followed through.
Did they come in under or over?
I think they came in under. They were definitely not over.
We added a lot to the project as we went along.
Because they were coming in.
They were coming in so much.
Okay.
I think we did that in Montgomery, too.
Okay.
Are there provisions in there where down the Walkers, issues, adjustments, tweaking, that they'll take care of all that stuff once the windows are in?
Yeah, the windows have a warranty on it. And they've been good to deal with on issues that have come up later in Berkshire.
Yeah.
And I think Kingdom as well.
How have they been? Like the new window replacements and other places, have they been satisfied with everything?
They didn't.
Ennisburg, the windows are fine. They had to do some repainting on the side of the building that gets the most heat.
From the outside, I mean, the sun, exterior? Yeah.
The window frame?
Yeah. And Kingdom's been receptive to those concerns.
So I think, well, I worked with Kingdom and I thought they were great to work with, too. But they told me, King... That day, John Hellegarden and Kingdom said that the work in Ennisburg is significantly less than what the project in Richford is going to be. Like they did some painting and storm windows and what we're doing is a major renovation compared to what Ennisburg did.
So what do you need from us tonight? A decision or...
We will need a decision, especially if we're gonna try to get this done over the summer. So the base contract with Spates would be 364. You've got 144 in your capital reserve account, so that's a good chunk of it. But we've got 200 and change to cover. As we get closer to the end of the year, we'll be able to see what we've... As we get closer to the end of the year, we'll be able to see what we've got this year. And to the extent that they're billing, able to get us some bills in June, we can use this year's money to pay that down before we start tapping the construction reserve account. And then when we have a good estimate of what that would be, you will need to decide if you wanna build the balance into your budget or if you want to get a loan for the difference.
Okay.
So, you know, I think we're at a point where, from what I'm told by Beth and Jerry and folks in the building, the work needs to get done, construction costs don't go down over time.
It doesn't go down, the windows are in rough shape. I think in the long run, you're gonna see heating and probably cooling costs go down because of it. I think if you just bite the bullet and do what we need to do.
Does that include taking all the old windows away and everything?
Done for.
Done for. So it's just matters, I think Spates, $50,000.
Sixty.
Sixty.
Yeah, and you know, we, the nice thing about inviting contractors is that you're inviting ones that you are confident can do the work. And these are two that I was happy to hear were submitting bids. When Murray Level went down, so...
Where's Spates out of?
Derby. They're both out of the Derby area.
So if you're inclined, I think it would be to make a motion to authorize me and Andy to negotiate a contract with Spates for window replacement.
I'll make a motion to authorize Morgan and Andy to negotiate with Spates for construction for window replacement.
I'll sign it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Kerry.
That's probably enough for me.
Well, Beth.
So I need to go into executive for personnel and I don't know if you wanna start with that or if you wanna end with that.
We'll end with, I got a meeting to run to here shortly.
So end with it?
Yeah, we'll end with the executive session.
Now?
No, start with the other stuff, we'll end.
Okay, alright. So, well, many of the items are listed out for you. I neglected to put Sharon Rattuno in as assistant softball coach. I didn't know she was. She does an awful lot for the school. She does boosters, she does a variety, almost anything you need. Oh, really? I did not know that. Who's, what's this woman?
I don't know what's her name.
Okay, Jim's brother's helping too. I did not know that.
He did know, I'm sorry.
So I didn't put those on the report, but I just wanted you to know. I have two letters of resignation. One is on my computer and the other one, you have that one? So Katie Oyer, who is the reading coach and interventionist here, wrote a letter dated March 13th. "To whom it may concern, please let this service notice that I will be resigning my position and not signing a contract for the 2019-2020 school year. Many thanks to Richford and F and E SU for helping me in the first decade of my career become a literacy specialist and the educator I am today." She's moving home, moving out to New York. And the second one is from Joe Marceal. "The purpose of this letter is to inform you, the Richford Town School Board, that I will not be seeking to return to work on August, in August, on a part-time basis. I will retire from teaching. I have sold my home in North Hero with most furnishings included and am taking this opportunity to move to Tucson, Arizona to be with my severely ailing in-laws and to support my husband's family in my best ways possible. As you know, I had a rather horrible year in 2018 due to my own father's debilitating cancer and his passing, which not only has, was exhausting for me as a classroom teacher, but it was a true first-time learning for me as to the rigors and requirements of in-home healthcare for the elderly. My husband's family is already relying on my own recent experience for guidance and support. I am saddened and emotional to depart the hallways of RJSHS. I am forever thankful for the support, the leadership, and the camaraderie among the peers that I have had at RJSHS. And I will surely miss the most, and I will surely miss the most, my most current students at the middle and high schools. I am hoping my retirement will be promptly, won't be promptly broadcasted to the students as I am hoping for a focused finish to the end of our current school year. I wish you, the teachers and the staff, a very successful new school year for 2019, 2020. And I am confident that a highly qualified and professional replacement teacher will be found to assume French classes that were being proposed for me to be teaching on a part-time basis. I will truly miss everyone. Sincerely yours, Joe Marceal." Both are significant losses for your... I know, but what are we gonna do? We've gotta advertise. We're gonna, I'm gonna have to tell him, we just gave you the letters today, but I can't wait until the next school board meeting to post for the job. So I need those letters accepted, right?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept letters of resignation. All those in favor? With regrets, yes.
With regrets. Aye. All those.
Motion, Kerry. Sorry. They're confused.
So, as you know, Andrew Hathaway's retiring at the end of this year from, from this school district. And I'm not planning on replacing him with a humanities teacher because Chris Hoy also has a humanities or social studies license and so does Robert Fair. And since I will be full-time at the high school next year, we're thinking that Robert is gonna co-teach like a humanities class with Katie Gesser and Chris Hoy will be co-teaching something with Ryan Garvey. And for 10th grade, and then Liz Erickson will do the 11th and 12th grade. So I am advertising for a full-time math teacher and a replacement for Debbie Atherton's Family Consumer Science, which I'm not sure that we're going to find because that license doesn't really exist in the state of Vermont anymore, I don't believe. You, you need the license to teach it, but I don't think you can get it anywhere in the state. So I've been talking to Jamie about the possibility of doing something with culinary arts and what the licensure would be for that. And so we're exploring, and there's another opportunity we're exploring as well. So we're taking the same amount of money, basically, and just allocating it in different ways. That's the plan. I have a bunch of dates down here. Student-led conferences at the elementary school were held last week. We're having our renaissance on April 3rd. That's our National Honor Society of Recognition for Honor Students in the Middle School. Student-led conferences, which meets the requirement of the yearly review of the P L P outlined in Act 77 for high school students are going to be April 10th. Well, really for grades six or 12, will be on April 10th. The High School Spring Concert, I know several of you attend that, is April 15th. At the elementary school, we're having an expedition of learning. So we'll have a musical play. The evening will start off with a musical play. I think we'll be serving like grab and go pizza or dinner that evening. And there'll be learning on display in the classrooms as well. And then spring break and a senior class trip is scheduled for May 17th through the 20th. And I was hoping Morgan was gonna tell us what our surplus for the year or anticipated surplus was because there are a few things that I would like to overspend on prior to the end of the year. I'm sure you're shocked. But we are very fortunate, and we've talked about this before, that Ryan Bushy has, is a STEM teacher being trained through upward bound, several different trainings. He's bringing a group of kids to Florida in April. And he's given me a list of items that he needs in order to implement some of those classes for next year. And that, and we've been purchasing things throughout the year. We have, we had a grant opportunity. He wrote a grant through North, through the credit union.
North Country Credit Union?
Which one?
North Country.
North Country Credit Union, yes, he wrote a grant. So this, the total amount is $12,285.70 for the, for the items that he needs. We are also fortunate that we have been selected by Amazon. And Ryan is going to be the teacher to do some commuter, computer science classes and they are funding us for that. We're going to be switching up our ninth grade science class to make it more STEM-heavy and, and there will be some environmental science in it. But we have found that the environmental science at the ninth grade level is in a large degree repetitive of what happens in junior high. So we're, we're going to do less with environmental science, more with computer science and more with STEM opportunities at the ninth grade level. So that, that's like a, a big wish for us. We'd like to purchase that now. And I talked to you earlier about a tractor because when Gary left, he didn't, he, he took his plow truck with him. And so we, we, it's been challenging this year to remove snow. And so the tractor and the parts would be, I think, between $25,000 and $40,000. We did, we're in the red right now, about $15,000 for buildings, buildings and grounds at the high school level, largely due to some repairs that needed to be done to the chip boiler. There was a large crack and, and it was unsafe and they had to come in and do work before we could use it this year. And they're recommending $5,000 further in repairs on that. And there's also the air conditioning unit for the guidance is not working. And it didn't work all of last year and that's $3,700. So those are my big, my, my big wishes before the end of the year and they're, they're big ticket items. And I don't know, I don't have any idea how much money we're gonna have left.
Can I write till next meeting?
Yes. I, I wanted to get my wishes in here. I'm also going to email you this. I've asked Jerry to put together some of the things that need doing because there are some things in both buildings that need doing. A huge one at the high school that I think we need to do in the next couple of years is drainage. There's outside the cafeteria, if you walk into our cafeteria and there's a exterior wall to the left, water comes right down that staircase. And in, and there will be standing water on the cafeteria floor during spring or heavy rains. And I think, I, the guy was there today, I talked to the contractor. Then it needs to be dug out and we need to put drainage tiles in and we need to reseal that wall because that's a significant amount of water each year that's coming in. And that, that'll, would cost about $30,000 to do that.
Gutters won't take, gutters replace over, that kinda stuff?
It's groundwater.
It's groundwater, yeah. We need to replace fuel tanks at both the elementary school and the high school. Jerry is talking about, instead of digging them up and replacing the fuel tank, he's talking about digging them up and putting a propane adapter on, which would cost less money. I think that he's had Fred's energy in there to give a proposal for that. And that's about $70,000 at the high school. Seventy, 70,000 and 41,000, there's two tanks that need replacing.
So he's saying, put in propane tanks and run propane versus number two fuel oil.
Instead of replacing the tanks.
Because it would be cheaper.
Their number two fuel oil tanks are in the...
Yes.
Do we have to report? I was gonna say, do we have to report that to EPA?
Well, they're...
If you have an issue with it.
It was, they've been there for years. There's not, there's not an issue. He's just saying that they're going to need replacing. Gary told that.
If you find an issue, you have to report. So we've just done similar projects in Montgomery and in Baker Steel, the conversion from the number two fuel to the propane.
Cause the business is regulated, isn't it? Every year or more, we ended up digging up our tanks at the mill because of the cost of it.
So anyway, there's tanks at both the elementary and the high school. I mean, there, there are several things that, that we do need to do and some of these, they're pri, the list is prioritized because there are some things that he'd like to do and there are some things that we need to do. There needs to be roof work done on this building in the next, I'd say, five to 10 years. So I know we're doing the windows and that's a big ticket item this year, but I think next year I'd recommend the drainage work. But for, I, I do think that we should do the chip boiler work this year, if there's money. I do think that we should at least do the initial investment on the tractor and...
On that piece of the snow removal, how, how does some other schools do it? How, how are they handling that?
We bought a tractor at Montgomery.
Really?
Yeah, we had, we did two tractors in the time I was in Montgomery. We had a John Deere first and then we bought the orange kind. Kubota, we bought a Kubota, an orange tractor, a Kubota. And my last few years there.
Maintenance runs it, like maintenance, does it, you got a place to store it and everything?
I was gonna say, where are you gonna house it?
At Montgomery, we have a shed, but I think there's a shed out back at the high school. Would be the, this year, Richard trucked it up out of the good, nobody asked him. And I did pay his trucking and, you know, I invoice.
I just wanna say, he went above and beyond, like he was out on the roads a couple of times, Beth told me about before plow trucks trying to get here with his tractor on a low bed in a snowstorm.
And one day he drove it. Like Martin Luther King Day, he drove it. And never told me. I wouldn't have known because he was gone before I got there. And I was so happy to see him. It was the day of that huge storm and I thought, I don't know what we're gonna do. And he was there when I arrived at six, quarter to six in the morning. And he and a friend, he brought a friend with him down there to our...
What does the elementary school do? Do they have their own?
They, the, the town will plow around. Remember, the town does the plowing of the parking lots.
Both schools.
Of both schools. But they don't do, there's, there seems to be more, there's more walks at the high school than... Because people are coming in every door. And at the elementary school, the, the town does plow around that back entrance to give egress. But John does a lot of shoveling down here. John Weld is a great employee. He does a lot of shoveling.
Some schools have snow blowers, a lot of them have.
We do, we do have snow blowers. We had snow blowers that hadn't been used in years. And so they did get them out and we have used the snow blowers this year. But because Gary used his own truck and plowed, they haven't been used in years.
If you had a tractor, would you be able to do that? Snow plow, or snow blower on it?
Parts of the town's doing it?
I don't think we could do the whole, the whole yard. I mean, that, that's a lot of plowing. Another thing that needs doing desperately is, so last year, the town blacktopped the driveway up until where they own. And then we paid the additional for that loop, remember? The, the drop-off loop. But that back parking lot is a mess. And, you know, so, so the parking lots are gonna be, need to be repaid too. I think I'm gonna email this to you as an attachment so that you can look at it. And remember, it's a prioritized list, so not everything would need to be done right away. But I want you to be aware.
Right, gives us an idea over the next couple of years.
And it's, it's, this whole Act 46 thing is a little bit different for me because you know how I go about things like this. I keep my budget really low and then if we have a surplus, I say, okay, what can we do off our list this year before June 30th? And I don't know how the budgeting's, I've never had to work with another town and I, it's gonna be a different board and I, I don't know if that's how the budget will be going forward. So at the elementary school, for the last several years, we have put like $55,000 in the budget... we have put, like, $55,000 in the budget for asbestos abatement and to redo three of the classrooms. We're right now at the point where the floors, the, the hallways, um, the gym floor, and the office floors, like, these offices, the main office floors, still have those tiles that need to be, we need to do the abatement on them, and then we need to pick flooring. And I think that's gonna take, um, this year, this summer, and the next year's budget to get that all done. Because it, I, I don't think 50,000 is enough to do all that abatement and the flooring.
And the flooring will be substantial for your gym?
Right. Yet, I think the flooring alone for the tile we looked at was 55,000. That's without the abatement of the tile in the gym.
Is that original tile in the gym?
Yeah. It's all lasted well.
Four years?
So, we can wait till April, but I just wanted you to, um, have an idea, and I'll email this to you. Okay? And I didn't, I didn't know if we were meeting in April. Like, I, I didn't know with the way things were going with Act 46, what the plan was.
So, we'll continue to meet because this board will still be responsible for operational year 19.
Okay. Regardless of what happens.
Regardless.
Okay.
So, there may be, there may be months where we say we don't have anything that this board needs to do, so we're gonna not meet, but we have stuff we need to do in April, so...
Okay. And I just wanted to let you know that, once again, Annette Going, um, in conjunction with Berkshire for the last couple of years, um, has written the, a grant, um, for the Vermont Humanities Council and received the grant. It's a great week that she plans. And Emily Kimball, um, the middle school reading literacy teacher, and Annette will be, uh, doing that the week, a week in June, the week after school gets out usually. So, the last thing I have is for executive session.
All right. For personnel?
Yeah, for personnel. Oh, wait, I do have one more thing. Sorry. Um, we have written a grant with Berkshire, no, Berkshire, Bakersfield because the state encouraged us to have partners regarding restorative practices. And, um, I have a letter of support here that I took the liberty of drafting, and I'll, I'll read it to you, and I'm hoping you'll sign it or have Andy sign it. The Richmond School Board fully supports the continued use and implementation of restorative approaches in the Richmond school system. The board first heard about restorative practices, and they approached it at the school board meeting on September 17th, 2019. Over the past two years, we have invested a significant portion of our school improvement money and our safe and healthy schools allocation from consolidated federal grants in an effort to build capacity in the pre-K through 12 staff in order to implement these tier-one practices and plan, and we plan to do the same next year. It is our plan to continue our contracted consultative services to further develop the use of these practices. The principal provides regular updates regarding implementation of these best practices to support the school community's social, emotional learning strategies. Are you okay with signing that?
Sure, September.
Yeah, you're September.
I have that up there.
Oh, I have the wrong date.
And down here, you have 19.
Uh, it's supposed to be 19. I have to fix it. I have to fix it, but we use, is it okay if he signs, if I get it to him to sign?
Yes.
Okay. I should've had you proofread that, Jane, sorry. No, it was my...
Should that be 19 or 18?
18. I did, I did the opposite. Okay. All right, so, if you're okay with that, I'm gonna ask Andy to sign that letter.
I can, it's okay with me, yeah. I'll make a motion to enter, take a, a personnel, a personnel.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Enter executive session.
I will make a motion for Lynn to hire away from the table SAT counselor at the high school and literacy coach and teacher at the elementary school.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those bowels? Um, so, Beth, we're done. Everything's on your end, so, board business? We have any future agenda items for these discussions? No?
Nothing.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, I do have one question on that, of course. I was questioned at town meeting. They, somebody questioned me that they heard Ennisburg is selling some of their property before the merger to, to the town. Have you heard anything about that? Do you know anything about that?
They're talking about the Monteith House?
There's no plans for that. There's been discussion about the Monteith House and whether it makes sense to sell that to the town. Um, it's a building that the school has tried to use in the past and has never really...
Except the one at the Cold Hollow, that's the community center or something?
And, um, I think the, the latest discussion I heard was that they don't wanna give that up because of the idea that they may want more land for Cold Hollow.
Yeah.
Continuous land?
I think that discussion has been going on for a while.
For years, yeah.
Right, but the, so, right now, it's, it's kind of leased, um, for nothing to the, to the town through the rec committee so they can do a community center there. So, there's no discussion to sell that.
Okay. Just, I was questioned, so I wanted to know if anybody, I hadn't heard anything, so...
Okay, nothing else?
Got a motion to adjourn?
They're doing a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
All second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you let Jane know about the motions and the time?
Oh, yeah, I should've written it down.
Well, I came back in at like 5:55.
Yeah.
And then Kevin.